Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Yes, here.
Motion passed at 7:00.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council this evening and will meet again in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you, Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you, Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report at this time.
Water and Utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report at this time.
Emergency Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but we do have a meeting scheduled on the 24th of September, immediately following the budget meeting.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several. We have Finance Committee, 19-151, 2019 City Auction, 19-152, request to designate October 4th, 2019, is made in Medina County Day, 19-153, expenditure for holiday lighting, 19-154, RFPs for drug screen and related professional services, 19-155, request transfer of city land to Medina City Development Corporation, CIC, 19-156, purchase of one 2020 F-150 four-by-four pickup truck and one 2020 cabin chassis, 19-157, expenditure over 15,000 for chip wall roofing for the fire, 19-158, grant application FAA North-South Taxiway at Airport, 19-159, grant application ODOT Aviation North-South Taxiway at Airport, 19-160, Delta Airport Consultants Task Order Number Two, 19-161, purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet 5500 HD LCF for the cemetery, 19-162, right-of-way agreement for Wheeling and Lake Area Railway and Emergency Technology Committee, we have one, we have 19-163, update financial software for the city, software solutions. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see from the fence outside of City Hall, the construction of the parking deck on the south side of City Hall commenced the week of Labor Day. Long-term lots will be available at Castle Noel, the Feckley Lot on the north side of Time Two, the County Courthouse Parking Deck, the County Administration Lot Extension off of East Liberty Street, and the parking lot between West Liberty Street and West Washington Street that has the Huntington Bank Drive-Thru. The Muni Court Lot is available on weekends and evenings. Three-hour lots were established at the area between Sully's and Porter's that was not fenced in, and also the entire lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty. And the City Hall staff have been directed not to use either of the three-hour lots, even if going to be there for less than three hours. And then, an extension of that is utility drop boxes were removed from the back of City Hall and over to the Municipal Court Lot adjacent to the handicap spaces. We're working on getting the post office to remove their box and put it over at the Municipal Court too, so that it's accessible to the public where it's not now fenced in. They told us that could take 30 days to get the mailbox moved. The mini-library that was adjacent to the utility drop boxes will be placed at the three-hour lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty Street. And then, we've added customer 15-minute parking on West Friendship Street on the north-side curb adjacent to the Medina County Historical Society for customers that need to come in and sign up for water, pay a bill, pull a permit. And then, we also established two handicap spots at City Hall on the paved area at the corner of West Friendship Street and North Elmwood, which is right outside these doors to my right here. And that provides the access we need then until we can get through this project, which they expect will take us into May sometime unless the weather this winter is exceptionally good. I'd like to congratulate the Noon Kuanis, I know Councilman, I'm sorry, Finance Director Keith Durham and Greg Huber are members of that, as is Councilman Jim Shields, for their 100th, serving 100 years in Medina, the Noon Kuanis. They had a celebration at Weymouth Country Club. The Farmers Market continues each Saturday on our square from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. until mid-October. Some, I believe, the Farmers Market has moved now to Broadway Street so that we can re-energize the square with the grass that's been kind of worn out and trampled throughout the year with the many events that we have up there. The State of the City was presented to the Medina Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday, September 3rd, 11:30 at Williams on the Lake, and just immediately prior to this, on council. That will be available on Medina TV, on the city website, on Facebook and on YouTube. There's an annual India Festival to be held this Saturday, September 14th, at Independence High School from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the address is 6,000 Archwood Road in Independence. The public is welcome and the events and activities are free. I will be presenting a proclamation on behalf of our city at the event along with a number of other mayors. And then, last but not least, the 9/11 Memorial. There's a pilots group that have organized a ceremony for this Wednesday, September 11th, at 10:00 a.m. at Medina Fire Station One. As you may recall, the memorial was built by the Evening Rotary, and the Evening Rotary is dissolving, and the Morning Rotary is going to take over the memorial and upkeep of it as well as planning annual events. I'd ask anybody that's planning to come to the ceremony on Wednesday, September 11th, at 10:00 a.m. to please park at the rear of the movie theater and walk across the street so we're not interfering or getting in the way if we have to get our fire units or LST out. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor mentioned during the State of the City, I wanted to remind everyone and ask them to support, we have a renewal and increase levy for EMS. The city splits this operation with the two townships, Medina Township and Montville Township. It's a partnership between the two townships, the city and the hospital. We pay our share, the city's share, through this levy and have not had an increase in 20 years. The levy was originally passed, it was a five-year levy, and then there were three renewals. Obviously, costs have increased substantially. They provide a great service, and when you or a loved one need them, you want them to be there, and I'd ask you to support the levy this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note for council and the public this evening. Our next round of ribbon cuttings is set for Friday, September 20th. These are in conjunction with Main Street Medina and the Medina Chamber of Commerce and the Medina County Economic Development Corporation. Our first one is at 10:00 a.m. for the Echelon Independent Living Facility that's located at 629 North Court Street, or I'm sorry, North Huntington Street. And that is a new business in Medina. I think you heard of the testimonial in the mayor's presentation earlier. At 11 o'clock is the New Leaf Massage and Wellness, which is a new retail business at 1075 South Court Street in Suite 200. And then, at 1 o'clock, we'll go over to 236 North State Road for Partake Kitchen, which is another new business that just opened there. And then, at 2 o'clock, we'll go over to the Hope Recovery Community, which is a new nonprofit here in the city of Medina at 200 Highland Drive, which is the former Medina County Children's Center location. And then, at 3 o'clock, we'll head over to Bumblebee Village La La Land for their childcare expansion project at 725 North Court Street. And then, at 4 o'clock, we'll move over to the 696 East Washington Street for Medina Summit Battered Women's Center and Rape Crisis Center. So that is our slate of ribbon cuttings for September 20th. We are taking the month of October off. However, in October, we are celebrating, or we're working on our next Madam Medina County Manufacturing Expo, which is set for Friday, October 4th. And this year's expo will take place at the Medina County Fairgrounds Community Center beginning at 8:00 a.m. with a keynote presentation by John Ratzenberger. John is most well-known for his role as Cliff on Cheers, and then he went on to be a consistent voice in all of the Pixar movies and has his own show highlighting manufacturing on the Travel Channel. More recently, he's been an advisor to elected officials in Washington, D.C. and sits on the Apprenticeship Council for the President. His topic will be the importance of manufacturing in today's economy. You can't grow a service economy, and we're very excited to hear what he has to say. If you have not purchased your tickets yet, there's still time to do so, and you can register online at www.madamadina county dot com. The tickets are for the keynote presentation by John Ratzenberger, which includes breakfast, and the cost is only $40. This is our third expo that we organized, and I think most of you know that this was an idea that we came up with to put on a citywide trade show but quickly grew into a countywide program with collaboration with all three cities, all three chambers, leadership and all of our school district and career centers. The 2015 Expo was recognized by Ohio Economic Development Association as a best practice in economic development, and Bethany Dentler and I presented it as statewide conference and shared how the Madam Medina County Expo serves as a workforce development tool. Last year, we surveyed our manufacturing companies and heard that they hired dozens of people who attended the event and then applied for jobs at the companies they became interested in. This also included some of our students who came to the expo with resumes in hand, interviewed with the exhibitor and were hired on the spot. So, we're very excited about our October 4th event, and we hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item for the council and residents. Our annual Fire Department Open House will be Saturday, October 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. As in the past, we have numerous safety vehicles, a helicopter landing, there'll be displays appropriate for all ages, and we'll have some type of food product for residents. Hope to see everyone there.
Thank you, Michelle Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, but we do have a scheduled Rec Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, September 19th, at 7:30 a.m. at the Rec Center. And then, I wanted to just say good luck to Ron Ross, President of the School Board, for running a 200-miler next week. So, good luck, Ron.
That's a lot of miles. Mr. Worley, Parks Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Mr. Pat, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have two projects that started today. The first is the South Elmwood Bridge. Currently, South Elmwood, just south of West Smith Road, is closed later this week. Unfortunately, the entire intersection will be closed to allow for the construction, that reconstruction of the bridge. And we also started our Concrete Street Repair, which is our annual program, replacing slabs of concrete at various areas through the city. I'd ask residents when they're passing through those areas to please be patient because roads will be closed one lane at a time while those work is going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. A quick reminder that the week of September 23rd, we will be closing South Elmwood between West Washington and West Smith for resurfacing. During that time, we will do our best to keep the parking lot open and getting folks in and out of there as the resurfacing is being conducted. Thanks.
Thank you. Notice of Communications Petitions, we have none. Unfinished business, we have one item, which is the rezoning on South Court Street. What I'm going to do is, we're going to read the ordinance, and when we have discussion at that time, instead of waiting for the introduction of visitors for the public to talk about that issue, I'd ask that, you know, anybody who wants to address that issue at that time can come to their microphone, state their name and address, and talk about that issue at that time. And then, when we get to introduction of visitors, if there's other items on the agenda that somebody would like to talk about, that's the time that that person can speak at the microphone about those other items. So at this time, we have ordinance 120-19.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
Ordinance 120-19, an ordinance rezoning the property at 1088 South Court Street from R3 High Density Residential to C3 General Commercial.
You moved to approve that?
Let me address this a little bit.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, moved, I moved to approve that.
Okay, discussion?
The, I'd like the council to first consider the modification of the ordinance. Attorney Justin Eddy is here for the property owner. The modification of the ordinance changes the zoning from what had been proposed that we received from the Planning Commission, which is C3, to a less intensive C1 zoning. However, in order to modify what the Planning Commission gave to us, because they approved C3, or to even deny what the Planning Commission gave to us, the council has to deny or modify by a supermajority vote, which is three-quarters of the council, that would require six of you. So if you were to deny what the Planning Commission already did, it would take six of you. If you modify to C1, it will take six of you. To simply pass C3, which is the most intensive commercial zoning, which is what Denny just brought up, that only requires a majority. So in terms of the order, I would respectfully ask that the council consider the modification. I'm recommending to you that you do that, to pass that as a resolution of litigation that's pending between the property owner and the city at this time, and it's also our ability to strike a balance between the least intensive, which is what it is now, and the most intensive, which is what C3 amounts to.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. What we're planning to do is listen to the residents on this, and then if there, we'll entertain an amendment to the ordinance, changing it from a C3 to a C1 at that time, and then we'll take a vote on that to see if there's any, you know, council support for that. So at this time, I'd like to introduce anybody who likes to address council regarding this issue on the rezoning of the 1088 South Court Street. If you approach your microphone and state your name and address, and discussion.
Thank you. My name is David Hoek, H-O-E-K. I live at 28 Pine Wood Drive, Medina, Ohio 44256. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of Pine Wood Condominium Association. We are here tonight to reassert our opposition to any rezoning of the lot at 1088 South Court Street. Our objection to any rezoning which allows a commercial driveway at a critical and dangerous spot on South Court Street. At our meeting in July, Attorney Eddy dismissed our comments opposing the rezoning as anecdotal. We have presented council with empirical evidence supporting the reasons for our opposition. This includes a testimonial signed by 72 owners and residents of homes in Pine Wood expressing their opposition. We also provided council with a detailed aerial view of the section of State Route 3 where the proposed rezoning would add an eighth commercial driveway to an already congested, narrow, two-tenths of a mile stretch of that roadway. One doesn't need 30 years of experience as a police officer or a paramedic to recognize the potential hazards in this short stretch of a busy highway. Here are more facts. There are seven commercial driveways serving 19 businesses, including a 12-pump gas station and a 10-bay auto service center, as well as two streets, Pine Wood and Hartford, between Stirbridge and Mast Parkway. Four of the driveways in two streets, including Pine Wood, are squeezed into a distance shorter than a football field. The proposed new commercial drive would replace an existing limited-use former residential driveway, which for the past 16 years, is an access to buildings that serve an economically feasible use for Trillium Creek. Based on an ODOT analysis of traffic volume at Lexington Ridge, there are 13,460 vehicles each day on Route 3. This analysis was done in 2010, and traffic has surely increased due to the continued development on both sides of Route 3. There have also been 16 traffic accidents in Medina on South Court, south of Stirbridge in the past 30 months. By comparison, there are 16,380 vehicles a day on North Court at Grand Boulevard, based on a traffic analysis made in 2016 prior to the major construction project on Route 42. Our concern is not just the increasing traffic, but the danger due to the limited sightline on Route 3 looking south from Pine Wood Drive. The proposed commercial drive at 1088 South Court would only be about 100 feet from Pine Wood, far less than the state recommended stopping sight distance of 250 feet at 35 miles an hour, and many motorists are going much faster. The driveway would be at the crest of a hill whose low point is just north of Lexington. The speed limit in that area is 45 miles an hour, while it is 35 miles an hour at the Medina City Line, which is where the proposed driveway would be. Drivers exiting Pine Wood only have six to eight seconds to enter South Court safely after a northbound vehicle emerges in sight over that hill. Traffic does not come to an immediate slowdown at that point despite posted speed limit restrictions. It is difficult and dangerous to make a left turn exiting or entering Pine Wood or the many commercial driveways along this short stretch of Route 3. Any additional commercial driveway would contribute to more congestion in this high-traffic area, creating further hazards and hardship for the residents of Pine Wood and the lives of the thousands of motors and passengers on Route 3. Ongoing and future residential and commercial development, such as the slated nursing home proposed for a five-acre parcel in front of Trillium Creek's business, will generate substantial increased traffic. There are currently 66 homes sighted on Mast Parkway with commercial and retail development proposed. Routes 3 south to Lexington and beyond also has property offered for additional commercial development. Attorney Eddy pointed out that Trillium Creek is not suing the city over what it cites as the arbitrary and unsupported decision of the BZA, which refused its request for conditional variance to current R3 zoning at 1088 South Court. It is only appealing the decision. He indicated the appeal would be dropped if the requested rezoning were approved. He may just as well have added, "or else." The owners, residents and many daily visitors to our Pine Wood neighborhood also appeal. We appealed a council to recognize the dangerous conditions and negative impact that allowing an eighth commercial business driveway would create on a busy, narrow funnel into and out of Medina. We appealed a council's stated concern for the general welfare of the citizens of Medina. When the city approved the development of Pine Wood 30 years ago, it was with the implicit commitment to the safety and security of its residents. That commitment had no expiration date due to changing conditions along the commercial corridor extending into Montville Township. This council represents and is responsible for the interests of Medina and its 26,000 residents. But most of all, we appeal to your common sense based on the knowledge and experience gained as you have watched and participated in the development of this historic city. We appeal to your commitment to preserving the past and forging the future of Ohio's best hometown and to do the right thing for the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pat Ryan. I live at 4254 Sharon Copley Road. The applicant applied for a land use variance to allow a bank kiosk to be constructed on a leased portion of the property located at 1088 South Court. The variance was not approved, but an appeal, I believe, has been prepared and filed by the applicant's attorney. In May, the applicant changed course and proposed rezoning the subject property to C3, the most intense and intrusive commercial district in Medina City Code. At the May 9th Planning Commission meeting, Planning Director Mandell stated, "The map currently designates the subject property, High Density Residential, as part of a specific area of the same designation to the north encompassing properties on the east side of South Court and Stirbridge Road Drive." Mr. Mandell stated he felt, "To be more consistent with the future land use map designation, the more appropriate zoning district for the subject property would be the R4 Multi-Family Residential." Staff did not recommend rezoning the C3 due to inconsistencies with the 2007 Comprehensive Plan Update and Future Land Use Map. And the C3 districts, full range of permitted and conditionally permitted uses, have a greater potential for negative impacts on the surrounding residential uses," to use Mr. Mandell's words. The east side of South Court has absolutely no commercial zoning at all, from the south city limit north to the corner parcel on Lafayette Road. The veterinarian clinic is a legal non-conforming commercial use in a residential district and was in existence when the property was annexed from Montville Township. The city had no decision in that use. Handel's Ice Cream is in the portion of the Stirbridge Town Home Planned Unit Development, PUD, designated for commercial use when the subdivision was developed, but the underlying residential zoning does not change with the PUD. It stays residential. Commercial uses within a PUD are often part of the overall plan. The only actual commercial zoning is across South Court, State Route 3, and the 2007 Updated Comprehensive Land Use Plan was referred to as old and out of date by Mr. Eddy. When that plan was updated in 2007, the corridor was identical to what it is today, except for Handel's and four residences, which are now gone. The 2007 plan is still very relevant. Part of Mr. Eddy's reasoning for commercial rezoning is due to the lack of residences along South Court. End of quote, "At the very least, it is clear that a residential zoning designation for the properties immediately adjacent to South Court Street is not appropriate for this area," unquote. Interestingly, the homes on the east side of Court Street between Pine Wood Drive and Mast were removed by the applicant as they purchased the properties. During the meeting, Mr. Eddy stated, quote, "Their intent is to narrowly tailor this as much as possible," unquote. And for that reason, he suggested amending their application to the C1 designation. Tailoring doesn't exist in rezoning. All permitted and conditionally permitted uses allowed in the requested district must be considered as potential future uses. Mr. Mandell stated, "The staff report was predicated under the application for the C3 designation and felt it would be best if the applicant requested a continuous and amended the application, giving the staff and the applicant time to revise their comments, assemble the commission packets and redistribute it for public process." Mr. Mandell also stated the C3 request would need to be denied by council, at which point the applicant could then submit an application for rezoning to C1. On August 26th, the applicant sent a letter dated the same day, quote, "Consenting and supporting a modification to a C1 designation." As I see it, the issue before council is the C3 request. To our knowledge, there has been no review, staff report, Planning Commission recommendation or even public comment on the C1. The entire process has been complicated by midstream changes in strategies, requests and applications. We are even unsure of how to address this. Do we address C3, C1, another zoning district, or all of the above? Perhaps this is their intent. I realize council has the authority to modify Planning Commission's recommendations, but should something as consequential as a rezoning from residential to a commercial district that very likely could permanently adversely affect- As I see it, the issue before council is the C3 request. To our knowledge, there has been no review, staff report, planning commission recommendation, or even public comment on the C1. The entire process has been complicated by midstream changes in strategies, requests, and applications. We are even unsure how to address this. Do we address C3, C1, another zoning district, or all of the above? Perhaps this is their intent. I realize council has the authority to modify Planning Commission's recommendations, but should something as consequential as a rezoning from residential to a commercial district that very likely could permanently adversely affect adjacent residential property owners be decided based on a letter of consent and support from the applicant's attorney without the Planning Director's staff report, Planning Commission's recommendation, or public input? The C1 still allows many of the uses, such as restaurants and bars and gas stations, that the Pinewood residents found too intrusive in the C3. Several questions beg to be asked. Is if the applicant's real intent is to lease a portion of the property for a bank kiosk, then why did they leap from a use variance, which was, as Mr. Eddie stated, narrowly tailored for this use, to the C3 commercial district allowing for a huge array of intense commercial uses? Did they pick the C3, and now the C1, I guess, in preparation for whenever the bank lease is terminated and the kiosk is gone? Why not apply for the CS, which allows for the kiosk, if that is actually their intent? Or is it? Why did they not finish the appeal process, which would give them the kiosk, and just the kiosk? Why is the city not following the procedure the Planning Director suggested? Finally, and possibly more important, would council have considered a modification tonight if it had not been for a letter from the applicant giving, quote, "Consent and support," for the C1 district? Or would you have voted on the C3 rezoning application as presented based on the Planning Department's staff report, the applicant's statement, and the public's comments? The applicant has the right to develop, but the adjacent property and the owners also have rights too. Zoning is to guide for urban growth and development used in accordance with a comprehensive plan. The 2007 Comprehensive Plan update from Medina states the area should be residential. The plan was created and supported by the Planning Department, the residents, and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Julie Larrabee, 36, Pinewood Drive. As a trustee representing the owners of Pinewood Condominium Association, I urge you to deny the request for rezoning the lot at 1088 South Court Street from R3 to any commercial zoning. The commercial use of that property would increase traffic congestion in that narrow section of South Court that already has many access points and no turn lane. A commercial drive south of Pinewood Drive would be right where a dangerous limited sight distance already exists on a street with ever-increasing traffic. That would compound the dangerous conditions and add more safety concerns. Don't forget the huge traffic problems that the out-of-control growth on North Court Street caused in the past. It took 20 years, over $20 million, and two years of construction to finally fix that problem. This property abuts ours on two sides, and the back property line is only 50 feet from our first four units. The bank kiosk seems unobtrusive, but Trillium Creek is just leasing that property to the bank. In the future, commercial zoning there would allow a wide range of permitted and conditionally permitted uses. These include a bar or a tavern and a gas station with a convenience store, along with all the noise and lighting that those would bring. That type of use would negatively impact our residential property. The Planning Director recommended not to approve the rezoning for just that reason. We have provided council with the signatures of 72 residents who oppose this rezoning. As elected members of Medina City Council, you must represent those Medina residents, who are voters and taxpayers, and decide each case fairly on its own merits, not just to avoid litigation or limit the city's liability. We urge you to protect our residential property and our quality of life by rejecting this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Quickly, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. Certainly appreciate everybody's time tonight and appreciate the comments from the Pinewood residents. Just a couple of things I want to address. I think it's clear that there's a traffic issue, if you will, in this area, more generally speaking. But in terms of what our request, those considerations are not properly before council in terms of whether to approve or deny the rezoning of this property. There's case law to this effect that talks about, and I can cite to you what those are. State Ex-Real Colleen Realty Covey, City of East Cleveland. It talks about where a proposed use is lawful, given the surrounding uses in the area, the question of additional or existing traffic becomes a secondary consideration, essentially. Of course, there's the consideration of the needs of the community, but zoning regulations are designed to ensure the greatest enjoyment and maximum use of one's land. We're not going to be a traffic generator. This is a use that's going to be designed to capture existing traffic. So on that basis, again, the folks here, and I appreciate their comments, and I know that they live in this area, but there's not a traffic study that was performed. Nothing's been requested in that respect. So I think that it's not properly before council at this time. Regarding the appeal, again, that's not litigation. I think everybody's clear about that, and we've said all along, I've communicated this to the lot director on multiple occasions, the appeal's pointless if the property's rezoned. That was done, honestly, last second in order just to preserve the client's rights relative to that. At the end of the day, this property is essentially an island in the midst of multiple commercial uses. Everything across the street, of course, is owned commercial. There are commercial uses to the north. The city has previously approved a similarly situated property for commercial development in connection with the PUD. There is a significant amount of commercial development that, as I understand it, is being performed in Montville Township, just, you know, a few blocks down the road. And the houses that were on the applicant's property were removed because those uses were no longer viable, given their location in a, as a zone residential, given their location in what has essentially has become a commercial corridor over the last several years. They were not marketable for sale. They weren't marketable for rent, so they were removed. And it's potential that those could be developed commercially as well, because they do exist in Montville Township. At the end of the day, this area is a commercial area. The Planning Commission recognized that when they recommended that it be rezoned. And I think the comprehensive plan, I'm not saying it's wrong, I mean, it is after 10 years or so, maybe it's time to take a look at some of those things and parts of that to determine if what was determined in 2007 or earlier or after is appropriate for this period of time and the type of development that's occurred in the area. Frankly, this lower zoning classification, I think, is an ideal transitional use between a C3 commercial designation and a residential use, particularly in what has developed into a major commercial corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council regarding the rezoning? Prior to letting council give their comments regarding the rezoning, I just want to ask Mr. Huber a follow-up question and clarification, so we all understand what we'll be voting on and how we'll be voting. Now, if there is an amendment proposed to the existing ordinance to change it from a C3 to a C1, Mr. Huber, my understanding is in order for that amendment to be effective, as you indicated, it'll take six of seven of us to vote yes. Is that correct?
That's correct. In order to modify, frankly, to some extent, the council's been boxed in by what the Planning Commission did here. They approved the most extreme commercial zoning, C3. And so in order to modify that, it'll require a supermajority or a three-quarter vote of the council, six votes. In order to deny what the Planning Commission did, it'll require six votes.
So, just to clarify, when you said deny, in order to deny the Planning Commission's C3 zoning, six of us would have to vote no. If five of us voted no, it would still pass?
Correct.
Okay. So, does everybody understand that? So, if we do an amendment and the amendment fails, we have to vote on the recommendation from the Planning Commission? And in order to deny the recommendation from the Planning Commission, six of us would have to vote no. Otherwise, if five of us vote no and only two of us vote yes, it would pass?
The other recommendation, and if it ends up in litigation, will be closely examined in terms of anything that you say at this hearing. So my recommendation to you is that you vote and that you don't offer a whole lot of additional
Thank you, Mr. Huber, as our legal counsel.
Are you asking us not to talk?
I would never ask you that, Mr. Lamb.
So, I guess with Mr. Huber's comments, is there anybody on council that has any additional comments regarding the rezoning at this time?
I do have one question.
Yes, Mr. Rose?
Thank you. Mr. Huber, I heard a comment, but I'm not sure I heard it clearly. The pending litigation that you have an agreement with, that was an appeal to the BZA's decision back in the spring?
That's correct.
Okay. So it really has nothing to do with the rezoning that's before us today?
Well, it does. If the property is rezoned, it resolves that litigation. If it's rezoned to C1, it resolves that litigation.
Okay.
Or that appeal, whatever you want to call it.
All right. And for conversation, if neither zoning is approved this evening, then that lawsuit goes through and a judge or court system would decide whether the BZA was correct or not in their decision?
Well, on the BZA, yes. Depending upon what happens here, there may be another lawsuit. That would be up to Ms. Attorney Eddie and his client.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
So, Mr. Huber, is there a current lawsuit?
It's an appeal of the BZA decision.
And you consider that a lawsuit?
Well, I do. We're in common pleas court. I'll have to file a brief. He'll have to file a brief to review what took place.
So, Jonathan, regarding the C1, is there a staff report on the C1 zoning?
There is not.
So procedurally, I guess there was a question raised that there was a staff report on C3?
Yes.
And the typical procedure to do this, regardless of what zoning you were trying to get, you would review it and you would submit a report?
That is the standard operating procedure, yes.
Okay. But there is no staff report now for C1?
I have not done one, so there is not, no.
So would it make sense, considering that there is no staff report for C1, and there is a lesser zoning that could be considered, that would allow the kiosk, but it would not allow the future development that could occur regardless of C1 or C3? Would it make sense, then, if we were to table this until the next council meeting so that we could take a better look at other options that we may have regarding zoning, as well as having a staff report done on the C1 and on a lesser zoning that would be a possibility, so that we would have all this information in front of us before we make a decision? I would recommend that we table it until the following meeting, or following, next council meeting, so that we can have that information.
So, Mr. Lamb, if I hear you correctly, what you're asking is that we table the current ordinance to make a determination and ask Mr. Mandel to give us a report on an impact of a C1 zoning on this parcel and an impact on another zoning? Are you talking to CS zoning?
The CS zoning, yes.
So we can make an informed decision as council if we desire to modify the recommendation from the Planning Commission? Thoughts of other council members on that? Mr. Simpson?
Well, just from what I've just heard tonight with the modification, if that fails, we'd vote on the C3. If that fails, it's going to open up the city for litigation either way. What was the third? It was the CS. And I do think we, I mean, if that is an option that Mr. Mandel, the Planning Commission, or mainly the residents could live with.
Well, I don't know if it's really, it's both of those, but it's also the owner of the property has to be able to agree to that change. I mean, there would be no viability of us changing a zoning classification that was not agreeable to the owner of the property. That would be just as not appropriate as us, you know, just...
Well, and, okay, I'll include the owner of the property, but that CS would enable the bank kiosk to go in.
Well, that would not be our decision. That would be something that Mr. Mandel would have to say it does or doesn't.
Okay.
Mr. Mandel?
A bank ATM drive-thru is considered a personal or professional service, which is a catch-all land use for banks. With the drive-thru is a conditionally permitted use. It requires conditional zoning certificate review and approval by the Planning Commission in either the C3, C1, or CS districts.
Thank you. Can that answer your question?
Well, it does, but, and I'm sure you'd have to submit a report. The residents, what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, and I could ask them to repeat that, but what I've heard, it's the future, you know, the Trillium Creek, the owners of the property are leasing to the bank kiosk, and the fear would be, you know, that if, after that lease expired, what type of multiple uses could be used that would infringe on their property use more? So I would agree with Mr. Lamb. I think if we don't have a, you know, we don't know until we vote. I mean, I would be okay in voting, but if we have a chance to make the residents happy and the owners of Trillium Creek happy, then I would agree with Mr. Lamb to put it on hold.
I think the property owner and Attorney Eddie will have to agree to the tabling of this. I'm not sure where you stand on that.
That was my next question. So I guess the answer to the question, would you want us to vote tonight on this? Or are you okay with tabling it to vote in the next two weeks to answer the two questions that Mr. Lamb presented?
We would prefer a vote this evening.
Okay. Okay. All right. With that said, is there a motion to amend the ordinance 120-19 from an R3 High Density to a C1 General Commercial?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance 120-19, if modified, an ordinance rezoning the property at 1088 South Court Street from R3 High Density Residential to C1 Local Commercial.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the role on amending ordinance 120-19, the rezoning from an R3, amending it to a C1 General Commercial?
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
No.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
The amendment to ordinance 120-19 fails. Three nays. Five VAs. Five VAs, two nays, sorry.
Okay. Since the amendment failed, then we have to vote on the ordinance itself, which is an ordinance to rezoning the property at 1088 South Court Street from an R3 High Density Residential to a C3 General Commercial. Is there any further discussion on that ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of that ordinance?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
No.
Heffinger.
No.
Lamb.
No.
Rose.
No.
Shields.
No.
Simpson.
No.
Ordinance 120-19 fails, six nays, one
No.
Rose?
No.
Shields?
No.
Simpson?
No.
Ordinance 120-19 fails, six nays, one yay.
All right, that's it. Now we have introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak in any use or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address, so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? So just to clarify, so everybody understands, both of those ordinance failed and there's no rezoning on anything on that property. That's what we voted on, so. But is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction considerations of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 126-19, an ordinance amending sections 3105 and 310707 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the Chief and Deputy Chief Probation Officer positions and accepting a chief probation officer and building custodian job descriptions for the municipal court.
Moved to approve.
Discussion?
Second. Sorry. Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause? This came through council, and what is going on here as far as this ordinance is that the municipal court is creating a new position called the Deputy Chief Probation Officer. Currently, there are two probation officers on the Salaries and Benefits Code. This will modify one of them and it'll only be one probation officer, but there'll be now a new deputy probation officer. And as deputy probation officer, we'll be adding a 9A through F position. There's also a modification to the chief probation officer's pay code going from a 20AF to a 16AF, which lowers that position's pay based upon those different steps. So overall, the changes being modified on the probation officer section is a reduction in the pay of all the probation officers based upon the changes that we were recommended to make at this time. Is there anybody that wishes to add anything to that or have any further comment on that? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Is there any further discussion on the adoption of the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Is there any further discussion on the adoption of the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Motion passes 6 yays, one abstention.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here. I know, it's okay.
Is there any discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. So ordinance 127-19 is per our joint operating agreement with the Medina Community Recreation Center and the schools. In this agreement, the schools pay all capital expenditures first and then bill the rec center the half. We are requesting to have all of our cash balance in our 575 capital account placed in OPO for the schools for this purpose. The reason for the emergency clause is that the bills for the roof project, which are completing here by September 20th, are coming in sooner than we had actually anticipated. We are behind on our reimbursements to the schools and would like to get them paid back up ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 127-19 passes 6 yays, one abstention.
Ordinance 128-19, ordinance authorizing an increase of the expenditure of a signal service company to $60,000 for the street department.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the year with a $15,000 PO. We're asking for this increase of the PO in $45,000 so we can have testing on our traffic control cabinets performed, as well as numerous repairs and maintenance items. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 128-19, an ordinance authorizing a purchase of 12020 Chevrolet Malibu from Ganley Chevrolet of Aurora for the police department.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a vehicle to replace one of our older detective bureau vehicles.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 129-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 130-19, a resolution accepting and approving the resolution passed by the Historic Preservation Board approving the application and recommendation for the designation of historical landmark for 205 South Prospect Street Phillips McDowell House.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a recommendation by the Historic Preservation Board for landmark designation for 205 South Prospect Street, which is commonly known as the Phillips McDowell House. The Historic Preservation Board reviewed this request on August 8, 2019, and did make a recommendation under sections 145.08ACDF to approve this as a, to recommend approval of this as a historic landmark within the city of Medina. The emergency clause is requested because the applicant and potential future owner, the current owners and the Medina County Historical Society, they need this designation to execute a grant request from the state of Ohio to help with capital funds for the improvement of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Clerk please call the role in adoption of emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes. I'm sorry, abstain, sorry.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 127-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 128-19, an ordinance authorizing an increase of the expenditure of a signal service company to $60,000 for the street department.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the year with a $15,000 PO. We're asking for this increase of the PO in $45,000 so we can have testing on our traffic control cabinets performed, as well as numerous repairs and maintenance items. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 131-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 132-19, a resolution authorizing an application for grant assistance from the state of Ohio, Ohio Public Works Commission relative to issue one and LTIP program funding for the Gates Mills Boulevard Bridge project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual application to the Ohio Public Works Commission. This year, we're going to be asking for a $485,000 grant for approximately $700,000 project. I would note, we're recommending Gates Mills with the replacement of Guilford Bridge last year, South Elmwood this year, and next year, we have funding through the same grant program for the replacement of Broadway, North Broadway and Spring Grove Streets, bridges. This Gates Mills becomes the lowest rated bridge in our system. We think it needs to be replaced.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Clerk please call the role in adoption of the resolution.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 133-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 134-19, an ordinance authorizing a mayor to enter into a task order number one to the agreement with Delta Airport Consulting for the professional services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to the extension of the north-south runway.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Mr. Patton or Mr. Pacoli?
Both.
Pat's passing, so. The city entered into a contract with Dixon Engineering to provide the city with technical specifications, as well as contract bidding documents, to replace the steel fill pipe at the South Court Water Tower, as well as the recoating of the dry interior. The emergency clause is being requested due to significant corrosion on the fill pipe. So this ordinance will allow for the advertising and bidding of the aforementioned, and we're hopeful that the water service will not be interrupted in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 134-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 135-19, an ordinance authorizing a payment to GB Hawk Construction Co. for the private home rehabilitation at 33 Circle Drive, Medina, as part of the fiscal year 18 chip grant program.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? Mr. Mendel?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a payment for a chip project at 33 Circle Drive here in the city of Medina. The total contract is just under $36,000, but we like to add a little more to the POs we like to add a little more to the POs just to be on the safe side for any potential changes that come along. The emergency clause is requested so that we can get the contractors paid that are participating in the CHIP program to be able to have the cash flow to continue bidding on CHIP program projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Clerk please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Orderance 135-19, a resolution authorizing an application for grant assistance from
the State of Ohio Public Works Commission relative to issue one and LTIP program funding for the Gates Mills Boulevard Bridge project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance. Mr. Patton or Mr. Pakoli? For both?
Pat's passing, so. The city entered into a contract with Dixon Engineering to provide the city with technical specifications as well as contract bidding documents to replace the steel fill pipe at the South Court Water Tower as well as the recoating of the dry interior. The emergency clause is being requested due to significant corrosion on the fill pipe, so this ordinance will allow for the advertising and bidding of the aforementioned, and we're hopeful that the water service will not be interrupted in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the emergency clause?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Orderance 134-19 passes seven zero.
Orderance 135-19, ordinance authorizing a payment to GB Hawk Construction Co. for the private home rehabilitation at 33 Circle Drive Medina as part of the fiscal year 18 CHIP program.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The National Recreation Park Association's 10-minute walk campaign is a commitment to make sure that everyone in our city has a safe and easy access to a quality park within a 10-minute walk of their home by 2050. The reason why we're requesting that the mayor sign on to this pledge is Main Street Medina has applied for a planning grant for an expansion of a walking loop in the South Town District, and the emergency clause is requested because Main Street was required to submit their grant on August 2 while council was on break, and the city needs to join the pledge in order for Main Street to be considered for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Resolution 137-19 passes seven zero.
Resolution 138-19, a resolution authorizing an application for grant assistance from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for the extension of the north-south taxiway at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the resolution and emergency clause. Mr. Patton?